We are live, Rebecca.
Thanks, Jenny. Good evening and welcome to the virtual meeting of the City of Dublin Planning and Zoning Commission. The Ohio Legislature passed several emergency laws to address the pandemic, including the ability for public entities to conduct virtual meetings. We appreciate this ability to maintain our continuity of government and will be holding our meetings online and live streaming on YouTube until further notice. You can access the live stream on the city's website. We welcome your comments on cases. In order to submit any questions or comments during the meeting, please use the form under the streaming video on the city's website. Your questions and comments will be relayed to the commission by the meeting moderator. Please provide a valid name and address when submitting your comments and refrain from making any inappropriate comments. We want to accommodate public participation in comments to the greatest extent possible and we certainly appreciate your patience. At this time, Nikki, if this view, if you could display the flag, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. For those of you who have video on, please turn your video off, your audio on, and stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
We're not the streets of America.
And to the republic.
It should stand.
Justice for all.
Thank you for joining me on that. Ms. Beal?
Mr. Schneer?
Here.
Ms. Fox?
Here.
Ms. Call?
Present.
Mr. Grimes?
Present.
Ms. Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. Fishman? Warren?
Am I muted or?
You're good now.
Okay, Mr. Supalak?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. I am looking for a motion to accept the documents into the record and to approve the minutes from the October 1st, 2020 meeting. Are there any questions?
Second.
A first and a second, Ms. Beal.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy? Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Supalak?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Planning and Zoning Commission is an advisory board to city council when rezoning and planning of property are in their consideration. In such cases, city council will receive recommendations from the commission. In other cases, the commission has the final decision-making responsibility. Anyone who intends to address the commission on any of these administrative cases must be sworn in. The agenda order is typically determined at the beginning of the meeting by the chair. The rules and regulations of the Planning and Zoning Commission state that no new agenda items are to be introduced after 10:30. Those who are intending to address the commission on either of these cases this evening, will you please stand? Turn your video on, raise your right hand, and answer in the affirmative. Looks like we're waiting for Warren. All right, just about everybody. Can you confirm?
Indeed.
Thank you. Do you swear for the truth, the whole truth, and how about the truth in your testimony to this commission?
Good.
Good.
Thank you, everyone. All right, we're going to take the agenda in the order which is printed. Item number one, new case, Bridge Park G Block, 19-129 INF. This is PID 273-012471 for an informal review. This application is for an informal review and feedback for the construction of three new buildings on approximately 2.29 acre block with roughly a half an acre of public open space and associated site improvements. The site is northeast of the intersection of Bridge Park Avenue with Mooney Street and Zone Bridge Street District, Sayota Neighborhood, excuse me, Sayota River Neighborhood. But Nikki, it looks like this is your case this evening. I'll turn time over to you. Thank you for joining us.
Great, good evening. As mentioned, this is a request for informal review and feedback. The site is actually comprised of two parcels that total approximately 2.29 acres in size. One of the two parcels, the Long Bridge Park Avenue, is presently owned by the City of Dublin. The site is located within the Bridge Park Development, east of the River. The site is currently surrounded by development with Block F to the south and Block H to the north. Block C is located to the west and the existing Sycamore Ridge Apartments are located to the east. A bit of background, the Planning and Zoning Commission most recently reviewed this project informally in January of this year. At the time, the Planning and Zoning Commission highlighted a number of concerns as well as opportunities for revisions. At that time, open space was at the forefront of the commons. The commission encouraged the applicant to ensure that the open space was usable, inviting and created opportunities for gathering. The commission also requested that all of the required open space be designated with this block. The commission encouraged that building G1, which is the proposed office building, be elevated in design as some elements may have appeared linear and flat at the time. Additionally, the commission requested revisions to the parking structure to ensure the design quality was similar to the established character throughout Bridge Park. And finally, the commission was supportive of the architectural character of building G3, which is the residential building located along Teller Ridge Drive. With that, to refresh the commission's memory, this is the proposed layout from January of 2021. North is oriented to your left-hand side. Bridge Park Avenue is to the south. At the time, building G1 was sited along Bridge Park Avenue, which is still true today, with building G2, the parking structure centrally located on the block, and building G3, which is the residential building located in the northernmost portion of the block in an L-shaped configuration. You'll notice in 2020 proposed layout, there was an open space that was visible along Dale Drive. You may recall that Dale Drive is a principal frontage street. This is the proposed layout in October of 2020. You'll note here that G1, the mixed-use office building, is still located and along Bridge Park Avenue and is the southernmost building. The modification here is that building G1 is attached now to building G2, which is the parking structure. You can see on the lower portion of your screen, close to Mooney Street, there is an attachment on levels two through five and a stair that provides the pedestrian way from Mooney Street to Dale Drive. The parking structure is located centrally and is unlined along Dale Drive and Mooney Street, which will, in the future, require the commission's consideration of a conditional use approval. And the residential structure, building G3, the northernmost structure, has been revised from an L shape to a U shape. This allows the private amenity area to be screened and is no longer visible from Dale Drive. Additionally, in January of 2020, there was a large blank facade on the parking garage adjacent to the amenity space. That facade is no longer visible from any public right-of-way. So I will be providing a comparison of each building from January to October. In January, building G1 was seven stories in height and had been anticipated for a office tenant. That office tenant did not select the Bridge Park site and the height of the office building has been revised and reduced. At the time, and similar to today, the office building did include restaurant and retail space on the ground story. This is the revised architecture. You're looking at the intersection of Bridge Park Avenue and Mooney Street. Building is six stories in height and has been reduced in size to a total of approximately 125,000 square feet. Similarly, restaurant and retail are located on the ground story along Bridge Park Avenue and at the intersection of Bridge Park and Mooney Street. In January of 2020, the parking garage was six stories in height and had 468 parking spaces. The additional height and additional parking spaces were in response to the additional size associated with the office building. The size of the parking garage today has been reduced accordingly to five stories and 414 parking spaces. As outlined in the staff report, the parking garage will require approval of a parking plan as the applicant is not intending to provide the required 590 parking spaces on this block, but instead intends to utilize parking in other larger garages like C and B blocks. You'll notice on this elevation facing Mooney Street, there are two tower features. These two tower features, south and north respectively, provide architectural transitions between the parking structure and the adjacent buildings. This is the proposal for the residential structure located here at the intersection of Teller Ridge Drive and Mooney Street. You'll notice in January, like I mentioned, it was an L-shaped building with 42 multifamily dwellings and 0.25 acres of private amenity space, which of course includes the pool area. With the revisions in October, the private amenity area has been reduced due to the U shape and is now 0.19 acres in size. This building remains at four stories in height and is proposed to accommodate 100 units, which are divided across three, two, and one-bedroom units. You'll notice here that the architectural character remains largely the same in response to the commission's support for this style. These conceptual elevations provide the commission a sense of the elevations across the block. Of course, the buildings will never be viewed from this angle. However, it is important to understand the building transitions. As I mentioned, if you look centrally at building G2, you can see how the tower features provide transitions between both the office and residential structures. This is the east elevation of the buildings along Dale Drive. You'll notice the office building on the left-hand side of your screen and horizontal brick, which provides a view shed into the proposed linear open space. Finally, the applicant has provided a revised open space plan and shown in yellow here on the screen, which I apologize, does not display well in PowerPoint. The open spaces are highlighted. I'll try to delineate them with my mouse here for you. But a total of 0.52 acres of open space are provided in addition to one private amenity space, which is 0.19 acres in size. In order to provide the total required open space of 5.29 acres, the applicant has added a proposed dog park. This dog park is a total of 0.39 acres in size. You'll notice here, according to the open space plan, the applicant is not intending to count all of the provided open space to their requirement. They intend to reserve an area to provide open space for a future block of development, despite developing it at this time. In detail, the applicant has provided conceptual layouts for many of these open spaces, the jog park being the newest addition. This dog park is less than a half acre in size and is proposed to have a double gated entry feature at the intersection of Dale Drive and Teller Ridge Drive. The park will be bisected by a curvilinear fence, providing separation for large dogs to the north, which is to the right or the left-hand side of your screen, and small dogs are to the north and large dogs are to the south. So with that, staff has expressed some concern that the size of the park and the fact that it will need to be publicly accessible and not exclusive as a Bridge Park amenity will lead to a fair amount of use and will require further coordination and final design as we move forward to the preliminary and final development plan approvals before the commission. With that, the proposed discussion questions were outlined in the staff report, but focus on the general layout of Block G, the proposed architectural character, amount, quality of the open spaces, and then, of course, any other considerations by the commission. The applicant team is here as well tonight. They are able to provide a bit of additional detail on the designs, materials, finishes, and of course, the open spaces. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. So thank you, Nikki, for the presentation. It is very much appreciated. Looking for the applicant, do you have a presentation in addition to Nikki's or are you looking for conversation back from the commission?
Hey, this is Russell Hunter. Let me start my video.
Sorry. Thank you.
No, we don't have a presentation aside from Nikki's. I've learned from experience that they do a really good job of putting all this stuff together. So I've got a few things that I might add, but honestly, I will be brief when it's my turn and really just want to start a conversation with the commission.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hunter. All right, staff, has any public comment been received on this item before we go into discussion? Well, food question, and we'll do.
We have not received any public comment.
Thank you, Claudia. All right, commission, looking to you for questions at this point. We'll hold discussion until after questions are answered. Does anyone have any questions? Ms. Fox?
Nikki, can you explain on open space, does it have to occur, since the dog park is considered part of the open space, it's on a different block? Isn't the intention of open space to be on the block? Or is there a, am I wrong about that?
So the code requires that designated open space be within 660 feet of the entrance of any building on the block.
Is that the case with this? It is within 660 feet? We lost her.
It looks like the connection's bad. Claudia, can you answer that?
She'll be back. It's magic.
It would meet that requirement. So the distance of the park that is provided is within the code-required distance.
Okay. And can you tell me, we did talk a little bit about what has changed, but when, can you explain, can you kind of explain how this tunnel works? And like, what is the, inside the pocket park? How does this connection affect the pocket park?
Ms. Fox, would you like staff to answer that or would you like?
Whichever. I'm just.
It seems like that's a question that Mr. Hunter should answer.
Okay. I can wait on that. I think the, did you notice, I guess for staff then, did you notice any significant changes having to do with our suggestions back in January that you would say met some of the concerns that the commission had mentioned? Did you see significant changes when it came to the things that you said we had concerns for, such as usable open space? The parking structure, design change, it's kind of difficult on these without actually doing a one-on-one comparison. Can you tell me if you saw significant changes?
Yeah, so I think we tried to outline that in the staff report to the best of our ability. Although, if you look at the open space plans from January to October, you will notice the ones on the block are largely in the same configuration and we have expressed some similar concerns about the the architectural char.
Nikki, it sounds like it's breaking up. And if Nikki is breaking up, maybe this is one of the things too that I would love for Mr. Hunter to elaborate on his presentation as to what the changes were that the team on his end implemented here based on your comments.
Okay, I'll wait. Thank you.
All right, going now to Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you so much, Ms. Call. Just a couple of questions for staff. First, just want to make sure I understand, right now, the parking is lower than the required code, correct?
That's correct.
Got it. At this point, I mean, would it be too early to talk about parking studies or anything in that space?
And Nikki, chime in here if you.
Just capacity surrounding parking garages and whatnot.
Yeah, we've had a lot of conversations about that in terms of whether or not the code might actually require too much parking. And we've witnessed it and the applicant has studied it tremendously in terms of what B block is experiencing and what C block is experiencing and that there is a huge vacancy in many of the garages. So Nikki and I specifically had a lot of conversations together about maybe we did sort of overestimate the need for those. So from a staff perspective, we are not terribly concerned about the numbers here. We know that there are folks from Crawford Hoynes that are counting religiously and studying and putting charts together. So that probably is not a huge concern on our end. Nikki, do you have any other thoughts on that?
Okay, thank you for the staff opinion. And then the second question on the dog park. I love that there's an idea for a dog park in this space because I see people walking their dogs with no place to go right now. Who maintains a dog park, though? Would that be a city maintained thing or would that be somebody else? Or is that too granular of a detail at this level? So our anticipation would be that Bridge Park, Crawford Hoynes, would own and maintain that dog park as they do the rest of their publicly accessible open spaces. However, it will need to be accessible to the entire public to be eligible. Got it. Thank you. Those are all my questions for now.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Any other questions for staff at this time?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
I too am real interested in the parking studies and usage between what was planned and what is existing and what will be needed in the future. My experience has always been, I've never had any problem parking anywhere down there. But, you know, that's just when I go. I don't know about the nights and days that where they might need or maximum need occurs, but I think it'd be very instructive. Is there a timeline? You know, you mentioned about a parking plan submitted along with this. Are you going to wait till that occurs in the next month or two? Is that a six-month thing? Tell me a little bit more about that.
So we would look to the applicant to submit that with their final development plan. In terms of them completing that study, I would have to defer Mr. Hunter.
And also, I too have a question on the dog park. It was mentioned in the notes about potential degradation because of the size of it. To me, that is, could be a real problem. Even the best maintained, if it's too small, if it's overutilized, I'm sure even the best maintenance crew could probably not keep up with it to make it attractive in appearance. So do you have some sort of experience background on this in terms of what's an acceptable size, location, peripheral to a development like this? There's a lot of good questions, but I don't know that there's any answers at this point. But could you give me a little more on that?
Yeah, sure thing. So Planning has consulted the Parks and Recreation Division in order to make some preliminary assessments on the proposed design. We do not, in the Bridge Street District Code, have a specific open space category for a dog park. That being said, the city's landscape architect does have experience in other cities developing dog parks. His recommendation is that dog parks that have split dog sizes designating two specific areas generally need to be larger in size than dog parks that are, you know, a general mix. Additionally, he had recommended a minimum of an acre in size, particularly if you want to use natural turf, as you may need to close down sections of the dog park in order to care for the grass. For smaller dog parks, it had been recommended to the Planning Division that artificial turf be used, really just due to the rigor, the wear and tear, particularly as I believe anecdotally, we've heard there's a significant need in this area. So we would anticipate a significant use.
And really, one of the things we've talked about as well is in terms of the size, it may not be an exercise park for a dog. It may more be of a relief area. Where I take my dog, she would not stay in that small space. So it's been a little bit of a concern to us in terms of the size and deviating between large dogs and small dogs in that particular space.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Call the commission. Mr. Fishman? You're muted. Still muted.
Still muted.
Mr. Fishman?
Okay, am I unmuted now?
There you go.
Okay, geez. Okay, I have some of the same concerns. Yesterday, I drove by the dog park at about 5:30 on Linworth Road, if anybody knows where that is, and that's probably four times the size. if anybody knows where that is, and that's probably four times the size of this one. And it was packed, just packed. In fact, people were were waiting for other people to get out, and it was loud and packed. So I think we should look at that real carefully. The other thing, I am concerned about the parking, even though we do a study now. The Bridge Bridge Park, to me, is going to get a lot busier with North Market, and and people are not going to just park right next to where they're going. It's going to be like Short North or any other German Village and so on. And so I I'd like to make sure that we, even though we think we're overparked now, if it's it's been successful, but it's going to be more successful when it's filled, and it's hard to put in another parking garage, you know, when 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 the buildings are all built out. So I would be really interested in the study, and I would like to stay to the original numbers as close as possible. I'd rather be a little overbuilt than underbuilt. I think that that's a real frustration in German Village and in Short North and any other density in our first ring suburbs. So is there any comment about parking? That's my my worry is parking.
So Nikki, can you speak to that? Right now, with the parking, it looks like we went from, what, 468? Can you speak to the 590 required comment that you made during the staff presentation? It looks like right now they're proposing 414?
So the Bridge Street District Code has some pretty high parking ratios for residential. And you'll notice that the number of residential units in Building G3 went from, I believe, 42 to 100. Therefore, the additional parking is reflected in that number. So, you know, there's on paper an increased need. But if you potentially look at the reduction in size of the office building, I think that is the applicant's thinking on doing some further study on this topic. But as Ms. Cole notes, 590 spaces are required, 414 spaces are going to be provided, and there will be 31 on street spaces. The total of 445 parking spaces across G block.
So just for clarification, that is, let's see, 445, I think you just said, total, where the code requires 590s?
Correct.
Thank you. So, Mr. Fishman, can I answer your question? Sounds like they're not meeting the Bridge Street Code right now as proposed.
And if I if I may chime in on that as well, I think Nikki, correct me if I'm wrong here, but the Bridge Street Code requires parking spaces based on bedrooms in in residential units, which is very, very hard to keep track of. In hindsight, not a great way to regulate parking because we've had certainly instances where we had X number of one bedrooms or we had X number of three bedrooms, and then the third bedroom got turned into an office, and it wasn't actually a bedroom. So keeping track of that has been very, very challenging and frankly, impossible. So as we are moving forward with the code, we would probably not propose a parking requirement in terms of those kind of numbers. And in and of itself, the hope was always that the district in and of itself would not rely on car owners as much as the rest of the city does. So we, as a staff, are not frankly uncomfortable with the parking numbers as they are presented just for where we are right now and where we are hoping to go in the future with the revised code.
Mr. Fishman?
Yeah, I I understand exactly what you're saying, and I looked, I noticed there are a lot of one-bedroom apartments. There's a bigger one and a smaller one, and and it's hard to control. In many cases, there'll be two people in a one-bedroom apartment in a lot of cases. And I think Claudia is right, it's hard to control based on bedrooms. But I just I worry about not the near future, but the long range where where it could change. And you say that we don't know how many people have cars. Well, I think we should assume that if there's two people living in a one-bedroom, there's going to be two cars. If they're two, they would normally be two adults. So I'd like to ask the applicant if they they have a strict policy on how many people occupy the units based on size and bedrooms. Mr. Hunter?
Yeah, I've been dying over here. Okay, so I'm actually not entirely sure if we legally can restrict people in how they use their apartments. So honestly, I'm not sure that I can answer that specific question. What I what I can tell you, so looking back at the parking garages as they exist today, and I'm talking about, well, really, all four blocks, but specifically B and C block, we have studied quite extensively, and both of those garages, there are nearly 900 parking spaces. Those blocks are, for all intents and purposes, fully built out at this point, so they're easy to study. We did these counts pre-COVID, so which is good because parking, the use of them is actually obviously reduced since then. And what I can tell you is, at the absolute max usage, we were never using even half of the spaces in any of those garages. So we're talking well over 400 parking spaces empty at absolute peak time. I think that the other thing that the code tried to tried to predict, but maybe didn't predict enough, is the sharing of office versus residential, which is something that this block is doing a really good job of. And that is that, and I experience this every day when I when I go into work, is that as I'm pulling my car in, there are three cars leaving. And you do the exact same switch at the end of the day. And so these garages, they really, they're being utilized, but they're not being utilized nearly as much as we thought they were going to be. So, you know, I we and we have all of those exact counts. I don't have all the numbers exactly with me, but the the delta between how many spaces are being used and how many spaces are provided is so wide that it made everybody feel really, really comfortable that we could that we could we could build this amount of spaces on this on this block and quite frankly, still have way more than we need. And we will provide all of that as a part of the parking plan and the final development plans submitted.
All right. Are there any other questions for staff at this time? Okay, Ms. Fox, if we go back to you, you had a couple of questions that we tabled, waiting for the applicant. Do you want to ask those to Mr. Hunter?
Right. You know, I'm curious why, I'm assuming you changed the the L shape to a U shape in order to get more apartments in? Was that what drove you to close off the open space off of Dale Drive?
It was a combination of things. If you recall, the previous version was looking at a for-sale product. This is an apartment product, first of all. I think that we all kind of heard you in terms of that pool area being exposed on the on the east side. The building shape changed slightly. If you notice, the the office building actually got a little bit narrower, which allowed the apartment building to get a little bit wider. So that that amenity space was starting to get a little big. It also gave us the ability to wrap that building around and connect at both ends, so people would have easier access. The one thing that we were always a little uncomfortable about, quite honestly, in that L-shaped configuration, is that if you lived at the end of the L, getting from the parking garage to your to your unit, it wasn't the best path, let's just say that. So we've, we think that by going with this U shape, not only have we made it better for all of the users, that experience of driving down the street, having the building actually complete the the street wall, sort of a win-win.
Okay. You know, I guess I'm there's a quite a few things to me that we'll talk about. But, you know, I'm really, I'm really surprised that the open space concern has been reduced even more than it was even in the original. And also, the inspirational images really aren't like coming up to where you kind of showed in the informal. There's not. Well, for one, you know, I guess I'm very worried about the first-floor streetscape, but I'm also very concerned about the fact that the inspirational images had a lot more interest, a lot more movement, a lot more uniqueness that that I was hoping that we would see that would change things up a little bit over on that block. Can you talk a little bit about, you know, that particular, especially, I think it's G1? Yeah, can you talk a little bit about that? Because I think the inspirational images really aren't kind of meeting meeting what we had originally talked about. And and that's the space for the restaurant, with all the restaurants, it's very small space there on the corner.
Yeah, so that 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 one in particular, we actually just had a meeting about that this morning and and specifically talking about how it's still looking a little sparse and a little Spartan. So in that, I agree with you. We, I think we are excited about the about the the water feature in that area and what that what that's going to bring to that area. We're we're struggling a little bit, the push-pull. So we, the open spaces and Long Shore Street, utilizing those for our restaurant tenants has been hugely successful. And the flexibility is an example for Fidow to be able to to spread out into the the pavilion open space there between and C block. Quite honestly, has kept them afloat, and I think that a lot of our tenants feel the same way. And so we've been, the push-pull in that particular space has been keeping it flexible enough that that tenant could use the space, but also then getting some interest in there so that it's, you know, so that on a normal day, you know, if in a post-COVID world, that that is a beautiful space. I think that what it needs right now is it needs a lot more attention to the water feature, and I think it needs softened. So I think of all of the the open spaces, that's probably the one that needs the most work, to be honest with you. I think that the one in between G1 and G2, I'm excited about that one because I think it'll be the most usable open space that we've built at Bridge Park to date. We spend an awful lot of money on these places, and and they look great. If you think about like either the one in B block or C block that goes up the hill, there's there's so many steps, there's so much grade change, ramps and everything that we, by by moving and creating that grand stair towards the west, it's just it's just going to make it a heck of a lot more usable. And as we continue to develop that, and we're literally like creating these little outdoor rooms, I think that that one is kind of poised to be the biggest surprise. And I think just something different. There's still, I think, I don't disagree with you that there's still work to do really on those. And but but I do think that they've got an opportunity to be really unique to Bridge Park and to Dublin as a whole, and and to be really, really special. As far as the dog park goes, while we're talking about open spaces, it's probably the number one biggest, I don't want to say complaint, but certainly ask from from tenants at Bridge Park is, what do we do with our pets? Now, we don't, you know, we have, I think, 400-some-odd units right now at Bridge Park, and we don't allow all of them to have dogs. So there's a limited subset of those apartments that are allowed to have pets, and then within those, there are weight restrictions on them as well. So, you know, talking about the usage of the dog park specifically just for Bridge Park residents, it's not like you would look at it and think everybody that, every single apartment is going to have a dog, and they're all going to go there. So I just want to make sure that we all understand that. The the reorientation of those roads created that really kind of strange space in between Dale Drive and Sycamore Ridge, and it's it's kind of haunted us a little bit. You know, what what do we do with this? Because you can't really put a building there. And then it occurred to us, all of those uses, the H block uses are all strictly residential. It's actually a really, really great location, not only for Bridge Park, but for some of the other apartment communities around there to be able to utilize that space. We, you know, we're we're just now really digging into exactly what that wants to be and fully open and transparent about wanting to work with the City of Dublin, the Recreation Department, to understand exactly what the, how it needs to be designed. I think I can say without question, if if that would want to be artificial turf, we would be all for that. You know, if that's going to make it maintained better, I think if if the consensus is it's probably better if it's not split large to small dogs, absolutely. We want to continue to work with the city, with our landscape architects, to really understand. Because you're right, you're right, we're the ones that are going to be maintaining it. And so we've got to make sure that it looks great and that it, you know, it it puts our best face forward in what Bridge Park really is.
Okay. You know, you were, I had asked a question about the tunnel going across. You know, I've got a lot of comments about this, which I'll hold for the discussion. But when you make your mention about that pocket park being so unique and different, and I'm going to have Nikki put up some pictures because I took some today of the street and that sort of thing. What is it that makes it so special? You say there's a staircase. What is it that's going to drive people into that corridor? And how does that tunnel all kind of play into that? Because it seems to me that then becomes sort of an overhead obstruction as well, so.
So when you say the tunnel, are you talking about the the connection through?
There's a tunnel underneath, there's a tunnel underground, and then there's a connection at Level 3. Is that kind of how that goes between the over over this little pocket park?
Okay, okay. So I think I think we're talking about two slightly different things, and it is it is confusing. This took a while for me to wrap my brain around, too. So the the tunnel is actually behind the stairs and is not visible from. So imagine you're you're standing on Mooney, and you walk into this the smaller pocket park there that is the entrance to the the office building is to your right. And you go up these grand stairs, that the the connection, the building above, is more than 20 feet in the air. So, you know, so when you you walk up these grand stairs, the view kind of, it compresses a little bit, and then it opens back up on the other side, which is something that what I think is is effective about some of the more linear parts in Bridge Park is that they, you start to create these outdoor rooms, right? They're, what I like about this one in particular is that it's a little bit more of a discovery as you're walking through as opposed to some of our other ones. So you you have this glimpse up these grand stairs of what's going on up there, and then it pulls you in. But I don't don't ever like, and we've actually purposefully studied and and disconnected one of the levels because we wanted to make sure that that entrance, as you were going in to the the east side of that open space, it wasn't so compressed that it felt uncomfortable. Yeah, you can kind of see that there. So the the tunnel then that you see behind there, that is basically just built into the grade. You it that connects the lower-level retail commercial tenants on that building and takes them into the garage where all of the services are, where the where the trash compactors and things like that are, so that all of that stuff never ever has to be seen. Yeah, hopefully that answers your question.
It does. And how wide is that corridor? Is it, did I hear it was like 33 feet? How wide is that pocket park?
I would have to ask one of my guys to make sure that we give you the right answer.
That's fine. We get the drawings with such teeny tiny, we get the smaller drawings, so it's so hard to.
Yeah.
It's so hard.
It's roughly 32 feet.
I'm sorry, what was that?
It's roughly 32 feet wide.
Okay, those are my questions. I'll save the discussion until we there.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Any other questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you, Mr. Hunter, for answering those questions. That's appreciated. So looking for discussion from the commission. Mr. Schnerd, do you want to start us off?
I will, but I will be circumspect for two reasons. One, because I wasn't on the commission in in January, so I don't see what. on the commission in, in January, so I don't see what, you know, wasn't privy to that discussion. And secondly, I have laryngitis, so whatever I say better be very, very important. And I, I raised the two points. I mean, the dog park is either going to be a wonderful amenity or really a bad idea. And I'm glad to see that both staff and the applicant are, are going to pay attention to that. I think it's great, but not the way it's configured. The other comment I'd have is with respect to parking, with Claudia's comments on how, how the code standard was determined, you know, in retrospect, it, it doesn't really make a lot of sense to me, you know, to base it on, on bedrooms. So now we, we create this artificial, or this, this metric that is probably not all logical. And I, I share the belief that there will be less cars in the future and not more cars. So I, I think that I've been consistent in saying we are, we look at parking standards wherever they occur.
Thank you, Mr. Schnerd. Mr. Pishman, do you want to go next? You're muted.
Now I'm unmuted, right?
You're muted.
Okay, I learned how to do it. Okay. I, I, I'm still, I, I know people say there's, there's, I'm worried about parking, even though we think we have lots and lots of parking, because parking is a problem. 10 years from now, it, it would be a lot tougher to solve. But I have to rely on staff and, and, and the developers to, to make sure it's to their disadvantage not to have enough parking, too. So I, I, I think what you're saying makes sense. I also am concerned about the dog park, and I think that, that Lance said it very well, it could be a nightmare, or it could be a great amenity. And I, I think if you drive around and look at some dog parks in the city, you see some of them are, are, are kind of minor nightmares. And so I think that other people besides the people in Bridge Park will be using it. I think that Sycamore Ridge, they've got a lot of dogs over there, and I think that, that, I think that thing has to be really well-planned. I hate the configuration right now, but I, I'm sure that'll be improved.
Thank you, Mr. Pishman. Ms. Fox, do you want to go next? You're muted.
I'm sorry about that. You think I catch on by now. I'd like Nikki to put up the photographs that I took, some contextual photos, just through the commission to see when I visited over there. I think as we add on, as we add on, as we add on to the blocks, I think it's important, for me, the most important thing, I know that parking is important, I know the dog park isn't, is important, but for me, it's the holistic view of the public realm. How do the buildings invigorate the street? How do the green spaces invite wanderings? How are we in, using placemaking as a way to make you want to linger for a while? So, Nikki, could you just start at the beginning there again? A minute. Okay, this is, this is the south face of Block F on Bridge Park. So there's a lot of gray there, and, and it's, it's, it's a building, I think this one is an office building, I'm not absolutely sure. So I want you to kind of walk your way around the block as to what the, the street level looks like when you are the pedestrian walking. Look for the, the green spaces that make you stop and look. Look for the areas that you feel would make you want to linger a while. So if you'll go to the next slide. Nikki, the next one, if you can. Okay. This is looking north on Mooney. All right. So there is, there is seating out there, but it's, it's in the sidewalk. So we've utilized the sidewalk now, you have to kind of walk around that. Look for green space. Okay, next one. Okay, this is on, on the south, on the north side of Block G. Those are the townhomes. So that's, that's a different, that's a different style of architecture, but those are single families. So that's where the question is about having, and Nikki can explain that, about having a particular corridor building across from single families. Next one. All right. This view, I don't see the, I believe this is looking north up Mooney. That's the parking garage looking south. All right. So east face of, of Block C, I think there's a, there's a pocket park picture here. Okay, there's, there's one of the pocket parks, I think probably about the same, same width. All right, next one. All right. So I guess what I'm trying to illustrate here is that if we continue, and Mr. Hunter, I just want you to take this as very constructive criticism. If we continue to allow the same, if we don't do something about creating a really interesting street face with a lot of, of little visual places to stop, you're basically just walking around the bases of a lot of buildings. And these pocket parks, as you've seen when we closed off Long Shore, people are craving to linger in the street, but we're just not getting that happening. The, the interior of that little U-shaped building now has totally taken away the view into that green space. Now it's become private, and the only thing left over are corner little, little patches of grass that no one is going to stop and linger at. Corridor park, pocket parks are nice, and they could be very interesting, but they're not enough. There's just not enough. And the other thing here is, is that the face of the buildings, and I'm not sure about this one, because to be honest with you, these buildings are so complex that, you know, I believe that we need to have the advice of an architect to help us, kind of help describe, you know, what we're missing. But, but on the face of this one in particular, there is, there's not enough difference between the first floor, the second floor, the third floor, and the fourth floor. The first floor of, of, of all of these spaces have to be, have movement, have interest, the, the, the front doors have to want to make you come in, there should be more areas of green space, more areas for the restaurants to really, to really expand, so you have this vitality on the street. I worry that we just have these front faces that are very flat, very linear, with a little bit of positive, negative space. I guess that's the architectural stop for it, call, name for it. We're just not creating a really interesting public realm. And I just worry, we only have a couple of blocks left, and, and this one is already encroaching into the right of way where the engineer doesn't want it. I just think we have a lot of work to do. And the inspirational images aren't, the, the design that you're offering us now really does not have the interest that the inspirational images that you offered us back in January gave us. They were much more fascinating, much more unique, just a lot more fun. I just, I just think this is your opportunity to do some really fun things. I was just downtown, and there's so much interest in the short, north and around the arena district of the first floor space, where you walk by, it just has, it just makes you want to stop. And I think we're not doing enough on this first floor level. And the parking garage is a huge piece in the middle between the loft, the loft buildings and the, and the G1 building. And it, it feels like, it feels like a void in the middle. And that is unlined at the street, so you've got a good midsection of the block that has absolutely no interest whatsoever, except a view of a lot of cars. I, I'm, I'm sorry to be critical about this, but, but I think that I'm just trying to illustrate why I worry so much about the public realm. We just, we're just getting a lot of concrete, masonry and glass, but nothing to balance it. So I'm, you know, I'm not happy about, about the design. So that's where I am right now.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Ms. Kennedy, do you want to go next?
Sure. Thank you, Ms. I just have a follow-up question for Ms. Fox. I'm just curious to get her take. Jane, is it more about green space or more about usable space? It sounded like you were saying usable specifically.
I, I am, I am looking for both. I mean, I think if we look at the Bridge Street intent and vision principles, it talks about the fact that we are looking for placemaking, we're looking for the general principles that we are creating interesting and distinctive destinations that attract people and encourage social interaction. That's happening on Long Shore right now because of the fact that we closed off the street and created an artificial public realm. But now, if you take that all away, you're back to just having flat-faced buildings with not a lot of extreme interest on the main floor. Now, Fidow's, like you said, Mr. Hunter, that is fabulous, because we have larger spaces. Kings Quarter has that, but, but in this design, that little tiny corner is just not going to do it. And there's no place else that you can have it. The street should have an interesting walk to them. There should be something interesting as you walk along the streetscape, not just more, a lot of glass to look into where someone's at a desk, but something that has a movement, a softness to it that makes you want to walk that street. So that at, at late at night, you don't feel like you're just up against a wall of masonry. We're at, we're looking for places that provide social gathering, it should have a flexible layout, it should be focused on retail, we shouldn't be looking into blank parking spaces. It should invite the people that live there to want to come out and talk to the, the people who are there. You know, I know, I, I say this ad nauseam, and I know I do, because the public realm in, in Bridge Park was what the whole entire area was built to do. And it's really up to you as an architect and a, and a site designer to make that happen. And I, I just don't see that happening here. I see you just pushing the boundaries all the way out to the outer edges and ignoring the entire public realm. So I don't even want to talk about the architecture because I'm just, I'm just so needy of a better public realm.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Ms. Kennedy, did that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you, Jane. I appreciate that. I did miss the pre-meeting, so thank you for your clarification. Okay, so my, my general take on this, I won't repeat the things that have already been said, obviously, but, I mean, we were asked to weigh in on, does this current proposal integrate with the surrounding buildings? Is it complementary? And then the open space quality, basically. So, I mean, if we were just to talk about, does it integrate, is it complementary? In my opinion, it seems to integrate, it'd be complementary, because I see Bridge Park is kind of a cool, contemporary, modern style, and the, the drawings that have been shared with us today seem to match that characteristically. I think there's a real, going back to open space then, I do think there's a real opportunity with the two open spaces between G1 and the garage. And specifically, I almost see it being, there being a lot of potential there. I think Mr. Hunter touched on this a little bit, but just to expand maybe, I think there's the potential to have it be kind of like a secret garden type, you know, feel, when you're walking through the small entry, then you come into kind of the bigger, longer space. There could be kind of a cool way to make that transition and make it more inviting. I, I and my family take a lot of advantage of the pocket parks in the area. We love seeing the Adirondack chairs, the tables for outdoor seating. We still don't go to restaurants, so we get takeout, we get takeout, and looking for places to sit outside. So, I mean, for me, I want to see, I agree with Jane, I want to see usable open space. So I think a bit more refinement of, of the open space is what I'd like to see going forward. That's it for me for now.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Mr. Grimes, do you want to go next?
There's a lot of food for thought here for both staff and applicant. You know, maybe putting the, the extra floor back on top of the parking garage and making a park up on top of that for, for residents only in the, in the whole Bridge Street District may be an answer. Or maybe a future answer to another question. But, you know, you've got a lot of rooftops that, parking decks that may or may not be utilized. So maybe, that's probably a pretty expensive answer, but maybe that's a thinking outside of the box kind of thing. I don't know. But I, I, I like the overall design. I think, in my opinion, other than the public space considerations, the, the structures themselves fit right in, are appealing, and I, I like the work that, the differences that were, the changes that were made from, from January. So I, I think you're moving it all in the right direction, and you just have some more refinements to do. That's all. That's about all I'd say.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Mr. Suplack?
Russell, I think there's a certain, sometimes, I'm going to say this, this is a good project, right? You, you know it, we know it. It's generally a good project. I, I think there are times when good projects get a lot of potential criticism because people want to recognize the potential that's there, right? So I don't, I don't want, I don't want that lost in, in, on you and any, in any of this. I think there's a lot of really, really good here. I'm going to generally back up and say, applaud the, applaud the amenity for the, the dog park. There's some risk there, but, you know, I think it's, I think it's worth, worth trying. I applaud on the G3 building, the Sullivan, Sullivan Gray Bruck building. I guess it's Sullivan Bruck these days. I applaud the massing change along that building. There's, there's, on the top, there's some up and down. Along the facades, there's some, there's some push and pull in and out. And/or I even applaud the corner. I had, I had difficulty with the corner balconies at some point. They felt very additive, additive scaffolding. They're now better integrated into the detailing, and they're subtractive. It's real, it's really a nice touch. I don't have a problem with the U shape at all. I, I, I could be fine with however staff lands on the parking. Very comfortable with that. I'm, let's see. Generally, I'm going to go back to, and somewhere in my commentary, previously, I was concerned about, I'm going to say the north and south face, well, all faces of the garage, garages are always a difficult thing, but in, in particular, I don't want anybody to lose sight of the north face and the south face of the garage. They are big billboards facing something, whether it's facing that pool, or it's facing G1. There is opportunity to do something better there than just, I think that, you know, it's shown as sort of perforated panels in a, in a perfectly adequate, normal way, but there's something there that could be really, really spectacular facing that G1 building on the corner and/or facing the park. I applaud, even on the G1 building, in the architecture, I see that you are trying. I think you're starting, starting to think through it. I, you know, I made, personally made comments about, can the fenestration start to dance a little bit? Can, can you do certain things, work in some fins, those types of things that sort of help it? I don't know that that's coming to life as effectively as in your drawings right now as it is happening, because it, it's starting to be there. There's color, there's, there's mullions that are moving a little bit. There's actually fin, fins that are starting to point back towards some of the, some of the inspiration imagery that you started to, started to work on and share earlier this year. I do agree with Jane. I do think some of the push and pull on those facades, G1 in particular, again, it's a good building. It has the potential to be an amazing building. I, I think there's opportunity to, to sort of, you know what I mean, encourage that to go a little bit further. And I would still go back to, there's something really compelling and interesting about spinning G1 a little bit. I, I feel like Vicky, Vicky Newell, when she was our chair, and this came through previously, she touched on that before, that creating this one building that sort of just turns, kind of in a quirky way relative to the rest of the streetscape, and we're talking three or five degrees, could really do some interesting things for that corner piece, or the, the corner pocket park, as well as the sort of a pass-through park behind it. It would open it up and create this canted, canted thing. In the past, we also talked about In the past, we also talked about, I actually really like sort of the secret garden kind of quality of finding those stairs, going up those stairs and finding the, the park open up for you. But in the past, we also talked about, is there, green space and park is pretty. Is there also some variant of sort of quirky amenity that works in there? The dog park is, is one amenity, but there's opportunity here to sort of work that in. And suddenly, those become not just pass-through places like, like Jane's talking about. They become destination places, right? That's where they, they have personality and presence that separates them from some of the other parks and they, they start to become destinations. I do think in all your drawings, I'm going to say this, say this to you, right, as, as a sort of fellow designers, fellow architect, something that's missing, and I think would, as you can, as we continue this conversation, like your, your rendering of G1 on the corner does a great job of showing the, the, the building on G1, but it's absent, it's absent the street trees. And it's absent, you know what I mean, that other layer. And, and you know how, you know how this goes. I know that's an extra layer in the rendering process and the, and the exercise. But even, even the silhouetted people you can see through that start to help us feel all of that. There's quite a lot of, um, street trees around that corner. There's quite a lot of that fountain is great. Those tables might have, might have canopies over them. Things like that start to make it more than just a building, but start to actually make it so that we can, we can feel it and live into it a little bit. Yes, it's, it's, it's good. I, I think, I think this group is pushing because we see, and I think you, you recognize it too, that this can be really, really great. And some, a little bit more love on some of these touches and it can get there.
Thank you, Mr. Suplack. I'll try to be relatively succinct. On the four items that we're asked to consider, the layout, I agree with Mr. Suplack in reading Vicki Newell's comments, you know, something that, that is a little bit more in the layout. I agree with Mr. Fishman on parking. One thing that I, I like the commission to weigh against. I know Claudia said, you know, it wasn't a very good idea to judge parking based on bedroom. In retrospect, that sort of thing. Keeping in mind that I imagine that that parking based on bedrooms benefits the one bedrooms and the vast majority of these proposed apartments are one bedrooms. Seventy-seven of them are one bedrooms, 15, two, and eight, three. And so I imagine that we're not going to get a lot of different numbers when we look at weighing it in a more standard. Additionally, I agree with Jane and Mr. Fishman on park. I think everyone kind of spoke to it. Point three-nine acres. I know that Mr. Hunter said, yes, you know, we can do, you know, artificial turf if that is, is something that the city is looking into. But I think the size needs to be considered, not just the material. The architecture character, I think Mr. Suplack covered it pretty well. I also agree with Ms. Kennedy, you know, this is an urban feel. We expect it to look urban. But I do think that, that Jane had some very good callouts for making it more open space. Mr. Hunter, in our last discussion, you had talked about open spaces and just ground level. If you have the appearance of top-down, and I think you actually talked about, this gives people an urban environment, but with a backyard quality. And I don't see a backyard quality in this application. And so that is something that I think is lacking. I do appreciate the out-of-the-box thinking for the dog park and that sort of thing, but I, I just don't see that, those backyard qualities that, that were highlighted before. And then my final note is a little different. We've talked about before, density and intensity. Those are the, the two words that we try to balance in an environment like this. And what my, my gut kind of turned when I saw 42 units turn into 100 units and 445 square feet for a one-bedroom and 77 one-bedrooms. And, you know, we hear from residents all the time that, that Dublin has a different character and we're looking for more, we're looking for A-game. And that's a lot of intensity and that's a lot of density. And you don't really get much more dense and intense than that. And so with that consideration, you know, this is the right place for it. It's downtown. If we're going to put density, this is kind of where we do it. But if we're going to do it, we got to have the, the platinum package. And I just don't see the platinum package. So I promised to try to be succinct. I hope I was succinct enough. At this time, commission, any final thoughts or comments to the applicant? All right, staff, anything from you? Oh, Mr. Fishman, sorry. You're muted. There we are. Oh, now you're muted again.
Well said.
Thank you, Mr. Fish. Mr. Hunter, are you clear on what the commission is looking for? Are you, do you have any questions? Do you need clarity on anything, any positions that the commission has taken in the meeting?
I don't think so. I, I, you know, I think that it, it's a lot of really great feedback. You know, Jane, you and I, you know, we, we have this conversation all the time and I, and I, I love it. You know, I think you, you talk about Longshore Street and, you know, I actually think that Longshore Street, when it wasn't, when it didn't have all those tables out in the middle of it, was, was just as amazing as it is now. It was just different, right? Public realm for me includes that street. And I, and I do think, you showed some pictures of, was probably my least favorite part of Bridge Park, which is the back of the liner building on the C Garage. Interestingly enough, we're actually looking at ways to soften that. So, you know, I, I think we hear you and I, and I think that we've gotten better with every single block. So if you look, if you walk down C Block or B Block and then you go down to D Block, which is just recently finished, you know, I, I, it's gotten better over time. And I feel like we're going to get there with this one. So appreciate everyone's comments. Don't really have anything else to add at this point.
Russ, I just want to tell you, you know, I'm going to push and push because you know how I feel about this. And I, I want, I really want to see Bridge Park become a timeless place that everybody just wants to be out on the streets and have fun. And, and on Longshore, you know, you've got some really fun entrances, like the fun stuff at Cap City. And, you know, there's just these fun places. And so on every street, you have to have these, these kind of places that you stop and go, oh, what's that? I just want to see you really pay attention to that first level. Make, make it so that every, every 50, 60 foot, someone's going, wow, what's that? Or let's just have a cup of coffee here and talk a while. And, and if you don't do that, then I'm afraid it will just become a place that people will be afraid in the dark to walk around because they'll just want to get past it instead of linger by it. So I'm always going to push the envelope on that. And, and I know that you can, you can do that as you, as you, as you tighten this whole thing up. But we need outdoor spaces now more than we ever did. And it's just so important to create a timeliness there.
I, I might like to add, Jane, like part of, part of what you're describing has to do with the destinations, right?
Yes.
In this stuff. And, and of course, we generally know there's a restaurant here and some retail, but we don't know what those destinations are, right? So that, that's where it's like, it has to at least, I don't know. That will come in time when those tenants, tenants also come. And as long as, as long as Mr. Hunter is making accommodation for them also to add their sort of unique flair at the street level, that layer will, will come in time.
And, and I, and I will add, that is probably the number one lesson that we learned as we developed Bridge Park, is that in the beginning, those beginning blocks, we put all the storefront in upfront because we thought we had to, right? What that means is, is that the tenant's not going to want to tear it out because that's additional cost to them. And so with the exception of a few, and you named Cap City was one, you know, they, they said, we don't care. We're, we want it to look like a Cap City diner. And so they, they, they made that expense. A lot of tenants don't want to do that. So that, that is, in my mind, the biggest improvement that we've done to our process is to say, we're not going to put this, this storefront in right away because what we get from that is now they're forced to think about it. They're forced to think about what it, what it means to their space, how it differentiates them from the guys down the street. And, and that is absolutely something that you're going to see here as well. We don't know exactly what it's going to be yet because we don't know exactly what the tenant's going to be yet, but we're giving them an opportunity to make it theirs.
Yeah, I'm just looking for visual surprises along the street and things where people, you create place making with visual surprises. We call it green space, but it's more than that. It's more complex than that. And I think you know what I mean. So, good luck.
I do want to jump in real quick too and just tell you, Jane and everybody else, that when we put this new block together between our last time that we were here in front of you guys and today, we really read every word and, and did our best to try to make different, unique green spaces, which is, you know, why you see a, a flat, our very first flat open space between the, the office building and the garage that has an opportunity for some turf areas and outdoor meeting spaces. Really trying to meet the letter of creating a unique, different open space. The fountain area that we're looking at, putting in a water feature down on the corner of Bridge Park Avenue and Booty. We've never done that before. We're trying to do something unique and different down there as well. And then really the, the dog park, the idea of adding the dog park in to be able to exceed the open space requirement or at least meet and, you know, potentially exceed if we look at lumping all that space in. That was an important thing that we really saw too, as we reread your comments, was that we, we hadn't met the minimum square footage requirement for open space. How important that was to you and to the city to make sure that we did that. So we, we brought in the extra point four acres, you know, of which we could apply a quarter, full four acre to this, to this particular development, really out of hearing what you guys had to say. And Jane, we were really, we were peddling you when we took the, at the services. We've never done this before where, you know, if you go through the open spaces now, one of our complaints that we really didn't talk about today so far, which is why I'm bringing it up, is no matter how much we try to, to make sure that everybody is, is doing their job with services and coming out of the back of these buildings. For example, like, you know, Urban Meyer and the Muse Beautiful Green Space and Fiki Ramen and these other places. With a four-sided architecture like we have at the back of these other open spaces, they tend to have a back door that opens onto the public realm, right? That's something that we don't like. We've heard comments from you that you don't like it. And the idea of loading and unloading and do we have enough space? And where, where are the services happening, right? So I hope, if you read the narrative that we sent to you, it'll, it touches on this a little bit as well. But we really, we thought long and hard about, about service and loading and access on this and came up with, I think, a pretty unique solution where there's an internal service corridor. So instead of having, you know, like Urban Meyer's Pine House's service door opening onto the open space, it opens onto an interior corridor, right? Instead of having that interior corridor jump out onto, into a door that, that empties into the public realm, that, that now is, because of the, the challenges and opportunities presented by the grade on, on G Block, that, that material is able to go underneath the open space through a concealed, we call it a tunnel. It really is just a hallway that happens to pass underneath the open space because of the grades. And those, the, the guy pushing the trash bin never enters the open space. He pops out in the garage right next to the service area, which is adjacent to wide and large service areas for vehicles to come, you know, to service the buildings themselves. So lots of little elements here that, that we heard concerns of, of the commission, not just from this last meeting, but also over, over time. And we've tried to see this as an evolution in Bridge Park. We're bringing it up to the next level. And these are the kind of details, it's always like Disney World where you go, you don't see service people. That is the platinum experience. That's what we're trying to create here for people of all different sizes and, and wants and desires. Or units, which I'm not sure if you guys have seen, that we rolled out in these units that are 450 square feet. They're small, but they actually, you can walk in and say, Alexa, make my bed. Or Alexa, create my living room. And it adds effectively an extra couple hundred square feet of living space to these units. Again, the platinum experience. Every time we walk through Bridge Park with people from outside the, the city, like we do every week, they, they continue to rave about what a great environment that we've created. A lot of that has to do with comments that we've gotten from planning commission, from staff and from all our tenants as well. So thank you for all your input tonight. It's a very well taken and well received. We'll, we'll look forward to reconvening again soon. And I can turn it back over to Russ. I just wanted to chime in with a couple of those, I guess, party, party thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Thank you for joining us this evening and we look forward to talking with you again.
Thank you.
Moving on to case number two, we have Heartland Bank, 20-139 PDP, located at 6500 France Road, Preliminary Development Plan. This application is a request for review and approval of a preliminary development plan for an exterior modifications associated with existing bank. The site is southeast of the intersection of which, West Bridge Street with Post Road and Zone Bridge Street District Commercial. Is that Post Road right between there or is that France?
Uh, Post Road is to the north of West Bridge Street and Francis to the south.
Yep. All right, well, Mr. Rich, take it away.
Okay, so as was mentioned, this is a request for review and approval of a preliminary development plan for existing bank in the Bridge Street District. A bit about the process, as you may recall, this was before the Planning and Zoning Commission of this year for a concept plan. We are now in part two of the three-part process, which is the preliminary development plan phase. The final step is final development plan, which is where you'll see the, those finalized materials, landscaping, paint colors, engineering details, so on and so forth. The approximately point eight acre site is located southeast of section of West Dublin, Granville Road and, or, excuse me, West Bridge Street and France Road. The site serves as an outparcels to the Kroger Shopping Plaza immediately to the south. You likely recall these photos of the existing conditions from the concept plan stage. Just wanted to include them again to kind of refresh your memory of the existing site. So you'll see the combination of pip and flat roofs, the white support columns and the drive-through overhang in these photos. And then a couple more photos showing the existing conditions of the site. So on the left is kind of east elevations and on the right is the south and west elevations. So this is the existing site plan. The site has coverage on West Bridge Street and France Road, as I had mentioned previously. The primary structure, housing the bank is centrally located on the site with the drive-through immediately to the north. The site is serviced by right in, right out from France Road. So access is also provided immediately to the south through the parking lot as well. The existing site does have 27 parking spots today. The applicant is proposing to remove six of those, bringing that total down to 21. So given the size of the building and per code, the site is required a minimum of 12 parking spaces. And code allows for a maximum of 125% of the minimum, which would be 15. So at the final development stage, the applicant would be required to provide a parking plan to account for that excess parking. And then this is the proposed site plan. So the applicant is proposing to remove the parking up along West Bridge Street as well as the dumpster enclosure in the northeast corner of the site. The building and drive-through remain largely unchained. And the applicant is also proposing improved or increased landscaping primarily along the, in the northwest corner of the site as well as the southwest corner of the site, immediately west of the building near the main entry and then to the, immediately east of the building around the utility enclosures. So these are the proposed north and south elevations. You'll notice that these are largely consistent to saw at the concept stage. The applicant is proposing a significant remodel or modern is remodel or modernization of the exterior of the building. This includes increased glazing on all facades with a new aluminum storefront system. It includes a new Trespa HPL plating material with a wood grain finish wrapping around on all four elevations. So, that's kind of the diagonally hashed area on these elevations. The applicant is also proposing a metal panel, which you'll see at the top of the elevations, a new steel I-beam supporting the overhang to replace the existing white columns. And then the existing brick, what's left over will be painted a dark gray color. So, with the increased glazing comes increased transparency. However, a waiver is required because despite the increase in transparency, that transparency requirement and code will still not be met. Staff is supportive of this waiver, however, which is outlined in your, in the staff report, because it does bring the overall transparency closer to code, not further away. With this, two other waivers also required. So, the first is to code section 153062E1. And so, that speaks to facade materials, both literally materials and then the percentage of high facade that is allowed to have permitted versus secondary materials. So, this waiver would allow for a larger percentage of each facade to be clad in a secondary material. So, that includes the Trespa HPL material, as well as that metal panel screening. The second waiver is code section 153062D1. And so, this section speaks to parapet heights. This waiver would allow for a parapet of approximately 12 feet in height, where code requires parapets to be between two and six feet in height. So, the applicant's proposing this largely to screen, which I think we saw at the concept plan stage, the existing roof line. That hip roof will essentially be screened by that metal panel. Staff is supportive of these waivers, as I outlined in the planning report. However, we are concerned with the proposed Trespa HPL material. We are recommending, staff is recommending that the applicant continue work with staff on finding an appropriate plating material. So, I'll let the applicant speak more to that material after this presentation. And then these are the proposed east and west elevations. Again, many of those same points apply to these elevations as well. And then here are some renderings. So, this is the west side of the building as proposed. So, you'll see that Trespa HPL material is the, the wood grain on the exterior here. And then this is the south and east elevations. And these are just kind of close-ups of the proposed Trespa HPL plating material. So, as you can see in this photo here, the applicant is proposing kind of a two-tone pattern. So, it's not all going to be necessarily one solid color. And the applicant did provide some information on durability and kind of other locations where this has been installed. But again, I'll let the applicant speak more to this particular plating material. Finally, staff reviewed the waivers against all applicable criteria and reviewed the preliminary development plan against the applicable criteria. Staff is recommending both three waivers tonight and approval of the preliminary development plan with conditions. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you all may have. And the applicant is also in attendance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Let's go to questions for staff, just before we do applicant presentation. Mission looking to you. Do you have questions for Chase at this time? Yes, Ms. Fox?
I noticed on the plans that the engineer had made, had a red arrow concerning, I don't know, if it's a driveway, that the applicant did not want to change. Chase, is that, do you know what I'm speaking of? There's a, there's, there's something, I, I don't understand what the, what Aaron's, our engineer was hoping that they would do that they don't want to do.
Yeah, that was, it was just a comment staff had, a general comment. It wasn't necessarily a requirement, but it was for the applicant to consider narrowing that access point off France, just to make it, you know, slightly more pedestrian friendly. But it's not a requirement that they have to necessarily.
Okay. And are there, it's really hard in these smaller designs, but I know that when you're in the parking lot of the shopping center, and you want to walk across, say from Roush Hardware, across the parking lot, is what, what kind of pedestrian amenities are we seeing that's going to happen around this particular, because right now, it's sort of like an island in the middle of the asphalt, right? And it doesn't really have a place in that corner, just because the development of the shopping center occurred around it. So, how are we improving that in a, in a way that makes, crossing the parking lot or moving from McDonald's over to the Heartland, or Heartland to McDonald's, or to Roush? How is that, are we improving that in any way with this, with walkways or sidewalks or anything like that?
There are not any improvements proposed, other than kind of what you're seeing on the plans. I don't know, Rex, do you want to maybe touch on that a little bit?
Sure.
Well, there are no improvements acquired in this point. So, we can certainly look at this in a more comprehensive manner. And I know the city is doing that, and, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
I have a crazy dog. Who would not like that tiny dog parked, by the way? But we are looking at, at least the enhancement of the France Road corridor in terms of doing more pedestrian-friendly amenities, as well as landscaping. And then I think we are going to go with Castor, who are owning that shopping center. We have been talking to them about potentially doing enhancements in that area to just kind of, right, keep seeing enhancements, but to just make it more pedestrian-friendly for all of the community, for sure.
It looks like, Claudia, it looks like Chase, the corners on the southwest corner, the southeast corner of the partial, those are new landscape islands. Are they? Or were they there before? Those look like, and I guess that's, I guess what I'm talking about. Those are the, that's a new piece, those little, little corners of the landscape and shrubbery. Is that?
Chase, help me out here, southwest.
Yeah. So, and that is, I know for sure the southwest is existing. They're just enhancing. Yeah.
They're enhancing it.
Yeah. And I think that is the case as well for the other area you're, you're talking about.
Okay. Because I can just, I just remember a sort of a white curb that you had to kind of jump over. So, I'm just.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right. Those are my questions. How, how are we making that corner appear as if it really, you know, stands out as its own little space, instead of just floating on the edge of an asphalt, you know, parking lot, I guess is what I'm saying. All right. That's all for now.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Any other questions for staff at this point? Seeing none. Let's see, who do we have? So, Ms. Trout?
Yes. Rex is in the room as well. And then I've got the landscape architect. I've got someone from Rusili representing, Rob Mitchell. We've got Mark Larimer, who's also from Moody Nolan. Am I missing anybody?
I think you've got it there.
Okay.
Mark is civil engineer.
Got it. Well, welcome this evening. Do you have a presentation or any statement for the commission?
So, we don't have any formal presentation beyond what Chase has already presented. We just hope that we can address any questions and specifically talk a little bit more about the exterior cladding, as well as the landscape, some of the things that came out of the preliminary review. One thing I did want to note, we included some of the renderings from the last conceptual review. Few minor tweaks in there. I know we talked about the color of the planters, and we're addressing that. Those just didn't get into Chase's hands in time. So, wanted to make that up and then just kind of let you guys know that we're here to answer any questions. And specifically, we know you have some concerns about the cladding. So, I'll turn it back to you guys, and we've got everybody here to answer all your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Trout. Fishman, looking back to you for questions that you may have for the applicant. Okay, Mr. Grimes?
Yeah. I, I like the cladding. I think it's attractive. I like the changes made, increased transparency. That's good. And tying this in with Jane's comments about the rest of the plaza, I think probably setting a tone here is going to help lead into what the city hopes to do with the whole plaza. So, I think it's real important that you take some of these comments to heart. And also, your leadership in this will help the rest of the development of the area. The question of having too much parking, I'm not sure, you know, there may be some reason why you want more than is required, but you have an opportunity probably to improve upon some of the things that some of the members have made in terms of landscaping around this. Again, setting a standard for the, the rest of the plaza and the future development. But I, I like, I like where it's going. I like what the staff has pointed out. And so, I'm looking forward to, you know, this project. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Any other questions for the applicant at this time? All right. Well, let's go into commission discussion. So, who wants to kick us off tonight with discussion on Heartland Bank? Mr. Fishman? Warren, you're muted.
Am I?
We can hear you now.
Okay, okay. I, I think walkability is important in that shopping center. And Claudia mentioned that Castor is going to do something about that, I hope. But I think that, that Leo's point about landscaping versus parking spots is, is really a good one. It does look like an island sitting in a sea of blacktop. And I think that I, I've seen people trying to run across from Krogers or, or Roush to the bank and almost get killed because it's, 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 it's pretty big when you're walking. So, it's not very walkable. So, I, I know you can't control the whole shopping center, but maybe you can do something that would kind of introduce or make it look more inviting to walk. I, I really like the change that I've, siding from, you went from aluminum to this, I assume the sample is what, what you're going to be using, right, that we got this?
Yes, that's correct. And I, I think we mentioned this, the sample that you guys received was one of the color samples. It is slightly thinner than the proposed thickness of what we would actually use. So, I did want to point that out, that it would actually even give it a little bit more of a hearty feel. So, we wanted to talk about that a little bit today, too.
Okay, great. And so, I, I think landscaping would be important and, and some way to introduce walkability through that sea of blacktop. And I think that, that won't be responsible now. But I think that if, if staff's having conversations with Castor, I think that'll help. But other than that, I don't have anything right now.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Ms. Fox?
You know, I, when we first saw the inspira, or the photos or the, of the original design, I saw that as a very warm material, a very warm wood. That's a sort of a transitional bridge, bridge street, coming down Bridge Park 161, Bridge Street, entering there. This is sort of a little gateway to it. So, I love the fact that we are modernizing it. I do believe that because staff has a concern about this material, and the fact that we do want more natural materials, I worry that something as contemporary as this and as sleek as this, without giving the warm sense of a wood feel, might look a little bit out of place when, when more development happens down the way. Because I think we have a lot of natural woods and masonry and brick and that sort of thing. And, and I looked at this on numerous build applications on buildings online, and I see it on very contemporary buildings. I, I would prefer to see more of a wood, doesn't have to necessarily be wood, but I, but I would like to see a more natural look. I am a little concerned about the height of the parapet. I guess I didn't appreciate when I first saw the informal that you were actually skinning the building so that from above, you can actually see the original roof. And the reason your parapet has to be 12 foot high is to hide that. So, if we were to build, and this is just a question I guess I have to ask, if buildings within that development or that center should ever be two stories high, and next to yours, are they just going to look down into a, a hole with a, with a, an old roof on it? It just, I wish there was something different that you could do about hiding that roof. I don't like the fact that you're just hiding it from ground level, and it's totally exposed above as if it were unfinished. That kind of, it seems like it's not quite done. So, I'm not crazy about the height on the parapet for that reason. And, and then I also, I think that it's really important for me to see a more natural wood-like skin. So, is there anything else that you can do to disguise the roof other than a 12-foot parapet?
Okay. Well, first of all, the parapet, I think, measures 12 feet if you look at the building, if you look at a wall section. But the actual visual part of the parapet is now much more than five feet, I believe. I don't have the exact number. But, you know, when you look at the elevation, you're not seeing 12 feet of parapet there.
Okay.
Now, if you, you know, if you've been talking about the roof, we can talk about a few, we've talked about, we're not sure what's going to happen in the future. But right now, there's just one building across the street where the second and third floor might have a view of that. And when you put that in context, I mean, the overall, before anybody focuses on the roof of this building, there is a sea of asphalt. There is roadway. There are, you can look at the roof of the, of the strip mall, the Castor building, and that, you're, you're looking at a whole expensive flat roof there with a, with quite a bit of equipment. I think, I think the McDonald's right next to this building has a roof that, it has a parapet, I think, hiding equipment that you can also see. And I guess my point is, you know, I can't speak to it. If in, if in the future, more buildings were built right next to it, it may or may not be an issue. But in general, when you look at the, roofs, roofs generally have a lot of stuff on them. And even, even roofs that you don't think about from the ground, even roofs that you can see from the ground, oftentimes you can see things. In this case, you wouldn't see anything from the ground. And you would have to be, you know, up, you know, in the third or fourth floor of the building. Looking right down this, where I think, for it to be, I think, for it to be an issue. So, it's, at this point, it's going to be, it would be a tremendous additional expense to, to revise that roof. And right now, it would be for the benefit of a few hotel, few hotel rooms. So, you know, I understand about the future concern, but.
Okay. I, I appreciate that explanation. It just, I guess, as you look at the images and all, I, I guess I was surprised to see the existing roof stay like that. But I, but I, I certainly appreciate that. So, my, for me, the biggest concern, I think, is that I, I believe that the exterior skin is that I believe that the exterior skin should be something more of a natural wood feel with more tone, more texture. I'm just not a fan of this particular product. But that's how I, and I would go along with staff in working with the applicant to look at some other options.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Ms. Kennedy, do you want to go next?
Thank you so much, Ms. Call. I think this, I'm really excited about this project. I'm so happy to see, excuse me, increased landscaping. Obviously, it's a significant remodel, long overdue. I know we spoke on this topic last time. A reduction of parking spots makes sense. The times that I've been through that facility and around it definitely will be a welcome reduction, I think. Going on to the Trespa, the two-tone material. I know Jane expressed some concerns with this material. But maybe a follow-up question for staff is, do we have similar materials adjacent? I'm thinking of the hotel across the street or across Franz and/or the McDonald's, the new McDonald's rebuild. Or is this material used anywhere in proximity that we can have as a reference?
Oh, I apologize. This particular material, no. The McDonald's immediately adjacent to the site does have the Nijihah, which is a fiber cement panel kind of product. So it is slightly different than this one. The Nijihah has also been used on the courtyard by Marriott, just around the corner on Post Road, near 270. Maybe Nikki or Claudia, if you recall what product was used on the hotel across the street. I personally cannot recall which product that might be.
Honestly, I think.
And if you don't have the name, Claudia, that's fine, because I'm not.
No, I think they honestly did only do hardy plank. They did not do anything else but hardy plank.
Okay.
So it's some sort of cementitious siding, I should say.
Yeah, okay. Well, I appreciate that. Thank you. I know Jane was pointing towards natural materials, the look of the materials. I just want to follow up on that comment.
Yeah, absolutely. And for town suites, which is sort of catty corner there, that would be something I would need to get back to you on. But I'm assuming they did a lot of Nijihah as well.
Okay. I appreciate that. Just because, I mean, this material is going. And by the way, thank you to the applicant and/or the city for providing the materials to us, working remotely. I do appreciate that. It helps to have it kind of in hand and to see the color and whatnot. So since there's so much of the building that's going to be covered in this, I would echo Jane's comment, maybe related to the quality look of the material, just to ensure that it's giving a quality feel, because there is so much surface that's going to be in this material. So that would be my feedback. And I will also echo Jane's comment on the parapet 12 feet high. If I look at drawing A300, it does look like a Band-Aid perhaps has been wrapped around the building. But I certainly understand the constraints. I did not catch that in the last review. So I'm not going to push hard on that, but I do see that now. So Jane, thanks for pointing that out. Other than that, I'm very excited to see a refresh for this building. So thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Mr. Schnair, do you have any comment on this application?
I think the design is great. I have nothing negative to say about it. We're all, we all commented on playing Frog or trying, you know, if one was trying to get from Roush Hardware to the bank or, you know, Kroger to the bank. But I don't think it's, obviously, it's not the applicant's responsibility. Anything the applicant could do to make that a little more pedestrian friendly would be great. But other than that, yeah, I mean, I think we all look at and say, wow, so much better.
Thank you, Mr. Schnair. Mr. Grimes?
I got nothing further to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Mr. Suplack?
The games with parapets is a common thing. So just so we're all hearing it, right, like lots of buildings have parapets to hide stuff. It's not really pretty when you look down on it. We've all been in that hotel that looks down on something. Even if it was, even if this roof was rebuilt, it would not be pretty in the end. So we don't really gain anything. And the parapet game is a lot of times a solution that is used. I'm fully supportive on the 12-foot parapet to hide the roof. I'm going to pretty much go to the material. I've specced Trespa before. I don't know that I've specced the, right, as an exterior cladding. I don't know that I've specced a wood grain version of it before. My concern, I think, is the same as everyone's. It will hold up in the weather. That's not the concern. But the, I worry that in some of the examples, that the grain ends up very monolithic, if you will, right? The renderings you showed previously had some, the wood was sort of variegated from one piece to the next. It had a quality to it. This won't necessarily give us that. So it's going to come down to if this ends up being the choice material, it'll end up coming down to some of that is going to have to be made up for in the detailing, in the seaming, in the rhythm of the boards in order to really start to make this feel like real wood in lieu of, you know, the panelized system, rain screen system that it is, those types of things. But that's all to say, I do think, it's been a while since I sort of reviewed and specced into materials like this. I would still be in favor of, could we get something where that allows us a little more of that variegated wood quality that you show in your renderings? If not that, this could still be, make for a very handsome building. I could be supportive. Again, the detailing would be important. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Suplack. Did I get everyone? I think I did. All right. So I'll wrap us up. I wholeheartedly agree with Ms. Kennedy when she talks about the increase to the landscaping. So thank you. Thank you very much for that. I also support the reduction in parking. As we all know, banking has changed over the last, you know, couple of decades. And so there is less of a need for parking. I also, Ms. Trout, thank you for touching on the planters. Those will be brought back. A question, you know, the first time we saw this, we also saw signs. And I know we had some comments on that. This time, we don't have signs in here. Clarifying with staff, we will see a sign package if it's in excess of the permitted signs. Is that correct, Chase?
Yeah, that's correct. And that would likely come with the final development plan.
Perfect. And then just one comment on the material. So thank you again. I know you've been thanked multiple times, but thank you for the samples. I purposely, after, you know, Jane and I and staff had a discussion earlier this week, I purposely took the samples and tried to damage them, because I wanted to see how they held up. And so the only way I was able, and I don't know if you could see my samples, the only way I was actually able to put any marks on these was to rub them against concrete. So tried, you know, with a pen, tried with, you know, different things, tried with the other sample, since, you know, they're kind of hard material. And the only thing that took it was rubbing it face down on concrete. So as far as material, I realize that's not the most scientific test, but it at least spoke immediately to me as far as its hardiness. I would also support working with staff to find something. Of course, I know that you want something that's going to hold up. You're not going to want something that's going to fall off the building or not look attractive in a year and that sort of thing. So I was comfortable with what I saw on these materials. I did prefer the lighter with the dark, the contrast. So the lighter of the two samples that we received, but I'd be supportive of working with staff to find a material, whether it's this that they're comfortable with or some other material that you're comfortable with moving forward. So those are my only comments. Looking back to the commission, any final parting words before we look for a couple of motions on this?
No, but I think, well, one thing, Ms. Call, I think if we are all in agreement that we need to have staff work with them about looking at alternative facade materials, because at least some of us have, I would not want to approve right now this particular waiver for this facade material until staff has an opportunity to look at some other options. That's how I feel and how we want to move forward. And maybe you want to take a vote on that. I'm not sure. But I think that was the one issue here. And I wouldn't want to just say yes to all of this without somehow determining that we do want to see some other options. If that's the commission's wish.
Understood. So looking to the applicant right now, would you feel comfortable if we were to approve a waiver to work with staff to find an acceptable product? That doesn't mean necessarily excluding this. It just means that you and staff have to come to a consensus of an appropriate material.
Yeah, I think we would be open to that. I mean, I think the biggest thing that I want to share on the material, and we talked about doing like a larger scale mockup. That's a pretty significant investment, because we would have to order full sheets of both of variations of wood. So if we feel like potentially that would be helpful, you know, we would be willing to move forward with that. We're also open to other options. We've used something similar to the Nijihah here in a couple of our buildings. But we weren't able to get the look, the wood look that we wanted. In a perfect world, we would use natural wood. We visited the Penn Zone there in Bridge Park. And even in its short time, that wood product has not really worn well. So we did have some concerns about that. I think we'd be okay with continuing to work with the staff. I do want to get some more examples that are more local, perhaps for you guys to see an application. We did find a building in Powell, the Bank of America, who's using this product. However, I have not seen it in person, so I don't know if it's a wood grain or a solid. So it may not be a benefit. So we are exploring that, once we heard that this is still a concern. And we will certainly look at other products. We have been doing so for quite some time. We just have not found that warm, natural-looking look that we want. It renders a little bit cool in everything that we've seen.
So Jane, would you be comfortable with that?
I think if we condition that they work with staff, and I would like to see them bring it back to commission. But if they work with staff and give some options and staff is comfortable, I think staff knows what the commission is looking for. And I know it's difficult sometimes to find just the right product, but we would like you to, I would like to see that go a little further. I'm just not pleased with this right now, especially since we haven't seen it anywhere. And it is a significant change from what we require. I would not necessarily have to say that you had to have natural wood by any means. There's lots of products out there that I think can give you the look you, but it's really up to you to find it. And I think staff should try to help us do that.
Ms. Fox, are you proposing that they have an iteration between now and the final proposal? Or are you saying that we can amend the current conditions? Is that what you're saying?
I would like to see it come, I'd like to see it come back. I mean, I think it's significant, as you said. It's a significant, it's a significant surface. It's going to make a difference. I think we need to see it again.
Certainly, we can do one of two things. We could do an approval of the design and the wrapping, so to say. And then at the final development plan, they would bring back the material for you to approve. Or we could table this, and then the applicant would bring materials back to you for your approval.
I think the first option seems reasonable. I would not want to delay them in their design process. They've gone a lot, and we've said that we like the style, the design. I just think it's that material, that's all.
Okay. And that's what the final development plan is for ultimately. So if you all are okay with that, and if the, if the FAG is okay with that, then we can certainly work on that. Ashley?
So Ms. Trout, would that be acceptable to you?
Yeah, we want to keep this project moving. It's been, what, two years in the making? We've talked about traditional rendering, two-story buildings, the modern concept. We're really excited to hit the ground running. We're getting into winter. We want to do this as soon as possible. So if we can keep the progress going, I would really appreciate that. We'll work as hard as we can to come to an agreement and get this final.
Chase, would you be able to put the conditions up and maybe update them?
Yeah. And to clarify too, so that's kind of, that was the intent, the kind of the explanation in the staff report, was that with the waiver, the request approved the percentage difference. So you would have more of the secondary or like the Trespa material and not necessarily. So one of the conditions, number four, was addressing the material specifically. So the waiver was addressing the percentage, whereas the condition number four was addressing the material.
So maybe the best way to go forward would be deleting four?
No, I think keeping four. So right now, we have continued to work with staff on selecting an appropriate exterior cladding material prior to development.
Yes, very good point, actually. Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay. All right. So I am looking for first a motion to approve three waivers. Do I have a motion? All right, I have a first. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Beal?
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Suplack?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Schnair?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Now I am looking for a second motion. This is to approve the preliminary development plan before conditions, including number four, which is working with staff on selecting the appropriate cladding material. Do I have a motion?
Sure moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Ms. Beal?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Schnair?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Mr. Suplack?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes. Thank you very much, Ms. Beal. Heartland, just your team, thank you for joining with us this evening. Thank you for your patience. And we are so very much looking forward to this project moving along. You've done excellent work and we are looking forward to welcoming you continuing in the city. So thank you for this evening.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is communications. So staff, any communication from you to the commission at this time?
Indeed. And Jane, if you have a chance, would you please enlighten the commission on what you have been warning to city council in terms of having a joint meeting?
Sure. I think the last joint meeting that we had with commissions and council was maybe last November, if I'm correct, Claudia. I can't remember. The months go by too fast.
Nowadays, for sure.
But we're planning on in December, and you'll be getting a notice to ask if it's convenient for you what date is, for a joint council, architectural review board, planning and zoning, and Board of Zoning Appeals Commission meeting. So we have the opportunity to discuss, you know, what's going on with council for you to kind of be aware all the time of what council's thinking. But also for council to hear from you, what your challenges are, what your concerns are, what your interests are, or anything that you want to bring up. Because I think in the past, we've not had these meetings. And in many ways, you, these commissions report directly to council. But without these conversations, there's a disconnect. And we appreciate that. And we want to create a much stronger line of communication between council and all of our commission members, so that we can hear what you're dealing with. You know, when you meet, what you're dealing with with developers, you know, the suggestions you might have to improve the process. I think just a better line of communication will make for a much better process, helping us to get things built here. helping us to get things built here in the city without too much, without too much pain and anguish. And so we're really looking for that conversation. And the way the agenda will be is, I know that Rebecca, you were probably asked about what, some of the things that you might be interested in, but if any of you have any, any interest or concerns or thoughts that you would like to be given to staff ahead of time so that we can make sure that we have, you know, some, some points addressed. But mainly, it'll be a conversation time, an informal conversation as we've had before, and also an opportunity for you to meet other commission members and maybe get to know the council a little bit better. So.
If you don't mind, Jenny and I talked today about just having this thought of, I'm sorry, Rebecca, having Rebecca be in charge of kind of doing exactly what you said, gathering conversation topics, but also having some question and answer sessions or having something that all of you might have questions on to ask council. So it can be anonymous for all I care. But we are, we're trying to just make it more, a little bit interactive and make it a little more meaningful. So we are hoping to get some ideas out to all of you. So Jenny and I are working on that, for sure.
Sounds good. Yeah, I think having sending in questions in or talking to Rebecca and, and we can organize those together instead of taking it, taking the work off planning staff's back, I guess.
Well, and then Rebecca, let us know what a good time is to meet with you, for sure, anytime. So. And, and in terms of that also, please, if you have questions, call us. Call me. Call Jenny. Please, please do that. So we're here. We're here for you.
Thank you, Claudia. Certainly, if, if the commission has any desire to have, you know, Jane and, Jane and I have talked in the past about having an architect come in and have some, a, a lot of us struggle to express what we're really looking for, mainly because that particular acumen or that vernacular is not something that we use on a daily basis. Mr. Suplack probably the exception. But being able to really articulate, you know, Mr. Suplack, you made me laugh in the last meeting when you said it just needs a little. And, you know, there are some things like, you know, cladding or exterior materials or positive and negative or articulation or facade, you know, all of these words that, that make sense to us, but they're part of the architectural lingo. So Jane and I have talked about having an architect in, perhaps, you know, some landscape architects or park resources who have done kind of that urban feel, because I think Dublin does a fantastic job with a variety of parks.
That's a good idea. Actually, for going forward in terms of who is in charge of parks or who is in charge of architecture or who is doing building permits and how does this all work? I think that would be a really good sort of training step.
Well, additionally, you know, I went through.
If you're interested.
I went through Citizen U when we first moved here. Through Citizen U, I was one month, lived here for a month when I signed up. And that was fantastic. You got exposure to every single one of the departments in New York. And the differences between the city that I had come from and the city that I just moved to. And so being able to know, one of the things that, you know, my, my previous life, open space, we had, we were where Dublin, Dublin was 30 years ago. And so we had to learn, and we had to learn really, really quickly, and we made some pretty painful mistakes in the process. So now that we're at a different span of the, the life of a municipality, being able to know and learn from those who have come through this phase before us.
And we've had these ideas as well as, like a commissioner, not all of you, obviously, at one time because it would be violating the public records. But like shadowing a project in, in terms of how much we work with each other, whether it's engineering, whether it's legal, whether it's the fire department or the parks department, just having a person stick with us throughout a project and tell you, we're meeting here, we're writing a letter here, we are accepting an application. It's, it's for you all, I think it would be eye-opening how much we do in terms of things coming before you.
Yeah. Mr. Schneer, question or comment?
Well, no, I was gonna, I was gonna add, I mean, when there's a, what Claudia is touching on is sort of administering through the process, which I think is sometimes, you know, I mean, as we are sitting on, on the dais and commenting, we don't have a full sense of what we're necessarily asking for. And, and/or where they're, where they're, the client might be, the client, the applicant might be in, in their process. There was a certain amount of, how about this? Claudia, what you were touching on was sort of a long for the ride, right? And I guess there's multiple aspects ideally. I don't know how we would necessarily pull this off, but there was, you were touching on a long for the ride on our side of the ledger and the administration of it. But there's also an along for the ride on the applicant's side and a legitimate design project. Because there's a lot of, how about this? We do not, this is language, architecture is language that it is both, it is simultaneously left brain, right brain, right? It is engineering and it is aesthetics and it is place making and it is art. And it is, like, it is this really unique sort of blend of everything. So there's a lot of times you do not have the language. You're, you're feeling something, you're, you're coming, you're not touching it. And you don't necessarily have the language and you don't, you're, you don't necessarily know what you're responding to. So it takes a little bit to get there. And some of that starts to work itself out via, along the ride of the, of the project as you're designing, as you're having conversations and critiques with a peer or a group or a jury, right? Things start to surface and you pull out the pencil and you start pushing and pulling on the paper. And you've, you don't necessarily know what you're after, but you start to find it. And some of that is, I was even going to, along, along for the process. I don't even, I wonder even also if there's merit to periodically, and now's not the right time, given the COVID world. But even just going down to OSU during critiques, during their critique day, when there are a series of, of students getting up and presenting boards and projects and designs. And, and I think we touched on, even, even in that, you'll find certain sort of goofy, human, psychological things that happen in that clearly bad design projects, the, the, the review will go well. And the jury, the jury won't have much to say, and they'll just, it'll be kind of one of those things where they just want to move on.
Yeah.
They, they don't have anything to sink their teeth into. And really good.
For sure.
Really good projects that have all sorts of potential start to, start to get really torn apart, not wholly.
And we, Jenny and I actually did this for a couple of months. We went to all kinds of planning commission meetings around the region to figure out how they did stuff. And one of the things that we found out at New Albany, for example, they did this sketch plan meeting, and they were all standing around the table. And people were throwing their plans out on a table, and they were throwing trays around, which is always something that we joke about. But, but it, it was one of the things where they were like, okay, we're not spending a ton of money right now. We're just throwing some stuff around and seeing if it sticks. And then we'll come back and do this again. And we did this a few times in Dublin, but we didn't get to the point where it was almost like too much. It wasn't trace. It was plans. So, but there are so many options that we could do this stuff differently. And I would love to have that conversation with you. Yeah. If you're up for it.
Mr. Grimes?
We had talked a bit about doing, you know, something like this back at the beginning of the year before pandemic hit, you know, going, seeing examples around the city, having opportunities to have conversations about the process and, and, and the results of prior processes and, and where, where we need to go. So that, along with the opportunity to attend some conferences and meetings with other groups, a lot of those things are all good input that I think I would need in order to, to advance my ability to bring better information or the right information at the right time in future projects. So, and maybe, you know, some of these examples, maybe there could be some potential video work that, that could be done to bridge that along with maybe some meetings. Like, here's a five-minute shot of 20 great examples around the city of the pocket parks. You know, what it looks like in Jane's comment of all of a sudden coming up into a pocket park or a hall, hallway or whatever, and just seeing like Shangri-La opens up in front of you. You know, having some video examples of that. If we can't get to them and experience them at all, at least we might be able to record some and say, hey, look at this, look at that. This is, this is a great idea. Look how they use that based on the, on the elevations and the terrain and the surrounding buildings and those things. So there's lots of opportunities to, to make this happen even with COVID. And I think that we, I think we all are hungry for that. Staff is hungry for us to learn as well as we are to learn from staff. So, you know, I think we got lots of opportunity.
So if I could make a challenge to the commission, if you could come up with your top three or five things that you would like to learn more about, if it's parks, if it's, you know, how you get the urban feel, if it's signage, if whatever it is, if you come up with your top three or five things and email them to me, then I'll look for commonalities. I'll meet with Jane and with Claudia and Jenny, and, and we'll put something together for, maybe it's, we take 15 minutes at the end of a commission, a commission meeting, and we say, okay, well, this is our prioritization list. Commission, how does this look? And then we'll pull together whatever that looks like for experts and some training sessions, if that's individual.
My challenge would be if you have a question for council, just even if it's one.
Yeah. All right. Mr. Fishman? You're muted.
Real quick, we mentioned getting to know different departments, one of, and having people get together and so on. Enforcement is one that I would like to have come meet with us and talk about enforcement because I think that, you know, we work really hard to get things done. And then when I drive down the city, it hurts my gut, around the city sometimes, it hurts my gut to see something that we worked hard to get that, that isn't being maintained or whatever. And so I, I think enforcement's a real part of the picture, even though we don't talk about it much. So.
Agreed. Thank you. Any other communications for this evening? All right. Well, thank you, everyone. As always, it's great being with you on a Thursday night. Have a great week until we meet again.
Thank you all. Bye, everyone.
Can you hear me?